Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, February 14th, 2017 Stoughton City Council Meeting. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Sorry I didn't get your card this year. And I'd like to do the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Boorsma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Trul.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Your alderperson is present.
Okay. Thank you, Lana. And let's see. Okay. I would ask if any alders have any communications before we move into the agenda. I have Alder Person Hirsch.
Yes, I would just like to announce that on Thursday, March 2nd, Sustainable Stoughton will be having a Green Thursday event to gear the community up for the new redevelopment authority project along the riverfront. And so we're invited three guest speakers, two from Interflu that will be talking about how to possibly restore the riverfront physically and promote green spaces and trails, how that could possibly look. And the second one is from Seventh Wave that will be talking about green building design. This Green Thursday event is to help the community start thinking about the site because in April, the RDA is going to have week-long charrettes with the community to work with the developer or developers to actually design the site. So this is a way to start the community to think and envision for that site.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I want to say it's March 2nd, 6:30 to 8 o'clock at the fire station.
I think we should all get one of these in office passives.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other communication? Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note that the artist group, 14 South Artists, is going to have an Art Walk Stoughton event on Saturday, June 10th. And this will be the first of hopefully what becomes an annual event where they're trying to get probably about 30 to 35 artists and together in the downtown Stoughton area with maybe 20 host businesses, some of the shops and businesses in downtown that are going to host artists. And we're trying to get like at least 500, maybe 1,000 people to come in. We're going to do some heavy advertising in Madison and other areas, Chicago area. So we're trying to draw people to the downtown, not only to shop for some art from the artists, but also to get them into the downtown shops. And, you know, I think the more we can do getting more events downtown, the better it is for economic development within our downtown area.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other communications from alders? Go ahead, Alder Person. Johnson?
I wanted to use this platform to reach out to my constituents. I know some of them are having some concerns and issues with the comprehensive plan, and they don't feel comfortable necessarily coming to speak here. And I just wanted to reach out to anybody who's watching this, to reach out to your alderpeople. And if anyone wanted to email me of my constituents in the 2nd District, that would be great. I would love to meet with you if you feel more comfortable at your home or anything. But if you just wanted to reach out to us alderpeople so we can make you feel more comfortable in what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? I believe we have one from our clerk.
Just a reminder, next Tuesday, we do have an election. It's a little one, but we'll be there. And you can do absentee voting in the presence of others through this Friday if you wish.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our public comment period. And we have one person that has signed up to speak. And just a reminder of the rules, basically, you have three minutes to speak, and Lana will set the timer. And when there's 30 seconds remaining, she'll put up a little sign and let you know. And the person who has signed up to speak is former alder Tom Seltzer.
Yay, Tom!
Thank you. Boy, do I miss this. My name's Tom Seltzer. I am at 545 Kensington Square in Stoughton. In the past year and a half, the city of Stoughton has struggled through a difficult, divisive, and contentious request by forward development for $5 million in TIF funding for the development of Kettle Park West. During this difficult time, no mention was made by the developers or the city administration that a request for an additional $10 million was in the offing before the project would be completed. The then-current financial director was often brought forward to explain patiently to the council and the public that this so-called loan would actually cost the city nothing since in a mere 17 years, the money would be repaid in new tax revenues. It was never explained how in the meantime, city services for this large and complex commercial and multifamily residential project to include city streets, sidewalks, public park, and police and fire protection would be paid for during this 17-year payback period. What was stated is that the payback would occur sooner upon further development beyond Phase 1, without any mention of possible further TIF funding requests delaying that Stoughton is an attractive, unique, iconic small city, but also a delicate one that cannot stand up to this kind of misrepresented and precarious financial risk. This is money the people of Stoughton will owe, whether it's paid in actual money if the development should fail, or in taxes received, but not used for their proper purpose of maintaining city services. It will be the citizens of Stoughton who pay for maintaining these services, and it will be forward development that walks away excessively enriched and rewarded at the city's risk and expense. If further development beyond Phase 1 is to take place, let it be done the old-fashioned way, well-planned, viable, self-sustaining, and paid for by the investors. If that won't work, let it be. Simply leave the project at Phase 1 and let forward development or any other qualified investors move ahead when they are ready to develop further on their own dime, at their own risk, and at their own profit. An ugly and unseemly but important question remains and needs to be answered. Who knew and when that the ultimate TIF request was going to be not $5 million but $15 million? Surely forward development did, but who else? Why weren't the entire council and the public informed of this prior to the referendum and the decision to move ahead on Phase 1? Again, imagine how stronger the opposition of citizens might have been as well as additional alders had they known the true extent of the funds involved was to be $15 million. Thank you. There's a little review of this that I wrote up, and there's copies of it on the table in the back. It's a little more extensive than this, but you're welcome to that. Thanks again.
Thank you. And would anybody else like to speak to the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
Was there a second?
Second.
Motion by Boorsma, a second by Engelberger. Any discussion or anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? There's only one item in it. It's our minutes. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, the next item would be old business, and we have Ordinance 1 of 2017, and that comes from the Planning Commission, and that would be Alder Person Trul.
Thank you. The Plan Commission offers Ordinance 1-2017, approving an amended specific implementation plan for QuickTrip at 1359 U.S. Highway 51, Kettle Park West, Lot 6 of CSM number 14058 in Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Trul and a second by Lawrence. And any, do you want to give some background?
Again, this is the second reading. It came before council previously. Plan Commission took this up. Effectively, what this does is it increases the size of the QuickTrip, approximately about 1,600 square feet. As a part of the overall site plan, it does reduce one of their tanks, adds another parking space, and adds two different patio areas. So, count the Plan Commission unanimously recommended that we approve it.
Okay. And Planning Director Sheil, you have some comments?
Just wanted to highlight the question that was raised at the first reading, is, I think by Alderman Swadley, is what additional value would be added by the changes here? And the QuickTrip team reported back that it's approximately a $200,000 change to their site plan.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question for Rodney, what you just said, $200,000 more or less?
More. Sorry. More.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on this roll call, or always follow. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boorsma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of 11 in the board.
Okay, thank you. The next item is possible motion to reconsider, and this is requested by Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yours?
Yes, I wanted to reconsider this motion for the simple reason that we had not set up any funding for this, and considering that the attorney had stated that it would be $5,000 to $10,000 in attorney fees to do this, I felt it was a bit premature for us to ask for something to be done without funding it. So I've made the motion to reconsider.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second by O'Connor. And before we get started, our council rules do allow for reconsideration if you voted on the prevailing side of an issue, which Alder Person Jensen has done. And so, help me out here, is the discussion solely on the reconsideration at this point and not on the actual motion?
That is correct. Yes, it's a two-step process. The first issue is the motion before you, which is to reconsider the issue. And so the debate should be focused on whether reconsideration is appropriate. If the motion is not adopted, then you just move on and you don't reconsider the item and you don't consider the item again. If the motion is adopted, then the same motion, if the motion to reconsider is approved, excuse me.
A simple majority?
I believe, yes, simple majority. If that motion is approved, then the same motion is again before the council, and you can debate the motion again and decide what to do.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I wanted to make sure. Did you have anything else, Alder Person Jensen, before others?
Well, that's it.
Okay. I have Kittleson and then Engelberger. So a yes vote takes this away?
A yes vote would bring it back to the table.
So basically, what we're doing is we'd go back to the original motion, which passed at the last meeting, and then at that point, we could vote on that, or we could make amendments to it, or whatever we want to do with it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that that's technically the case. I think all we're doing is, my understanding is that we're just voting on whether or not we want to reconsider it. Anything after that is pretty much wide open, I think, Tim.
Okay.
So we can do whatever. We don't, my point is, we don't necessarily have to go back to the motion that we voted on before, that's all.
Well, actually, if the motion to reconsider is approved, then the motion that you voted on is then the one that's back in front of you. And then you can decide what to do with that motion.
And then get it deleted.
Yeah, well, same thing, only different.
Okay. Anything else, Alder Person Kittleson? So a yes vote and we'll bring it back.
Yeah.
Correct.
Just to talk about it more.
Yep. So I have Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see anything in the packet about this. You know, there's a, it was stated that it would cost a whole bunch of money. I don't see any information about that, so how are we even going to debate that if it's not even in the packet?
Well.
Yeah, I think what would happen is we would take the vote to reconsider, and then that motion would pop up, and at that point, we would entertain that discussion. And then, you know, we'll see if we have any more information. Alder Person Lawrence?
Mr. President, I think that's exactly the point of the motion, to, the way I understand Alder Person Jensen's narrative before is that we hadn't really talked about, at least in his view, how much this could possibly cost. So, it's an open question.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions or comments before we vote on the reconsideration?
I do.
Alder Person Boersma.
I just think that if it comes to this level of concern by one of our council people that we should look at it again. So I'm going to be voting positively on this one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the reconsideration?
No.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. We can do a roll call.
Can you, I'm confused.
Okay.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
It's okay.
I thought this was coming before us for the reasons that stated, but I think one of the reasons that we had, when Greg came to our Landmarks Committee, he was saying that he heard that it was like going to be $40,000 or something. No?
Five to 10.
Five to 10.
Well, if we reconsider it, then we'll have the conversation, and at that point, if it is going to be that much, then you can take that into consideration when we have another vote.
Okay.
What we're doing now is trying to decide whether or not we want to basically re-vote on that again.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to do a roll call then.
And can I change my vote then?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Kittleson.
Yes.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boorsma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
No.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
No.
That motion carries on a vote of 8 to 4.
8 to 4. Okay, so that takes us back to the original motion, which, at this point, I don't remember who made it at the last meeting.
Tom's motion.
So you could, basically, do we have to remake the motion then?
No, it's already before you.
It's already before us.
In the form that it was made.
So we can just open it up for discussion? And I would say that Peggy Verigien from the Landmarks Commission is here, and I believe they have met since the last council meeting. So there might be some information that that group can certainly provide us to address any concerns we may have.
They did have a good discussion about that, if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, they did have a good discussion about that, and I think Peggy's input would be valuable. I don't oppose this, not at all, but it's just that after thinking about it, it just felt like we're putting something on the landmarks and asking them to do something that our attorney has told us is going to cost $5,000 to $10,000, and it seemed ludicrous for me to ask them to do that without having the funding in hand to be able to do that. I also asked the attorney if he could explain to us a little bit further and a little more detail as to what the conflict was and what the issue would be in trying to coordinate these two ordinances so that they were more in line with each other.
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Okay. So, in addition to the request from Alder Person Jensen, I also received an email from Peggy last week asking me to send her the materials I had worked on for another community. And that was kind of what prompted me when there was a discussion at the last meeting about what this might entail. I had a recollection of that process, what we did, and about how much kind of work and effort was involved. So I did send the materials that I prepared for the Village of Oregon when they kind of revised the procedures that are used in that community relating to their historic And I looked back to see how much time was involved, and it looked like I spent about 48 hours of time on that project. Now, I have no idea really where this particular project would go here in Stoughton. I don't know exactly what I may or may not be asked to do, what kind of issues we're going to run into, how many meetings I'm going to attend, if any. I don't, you know, I haven't been asked to do anything, but, so that was kind of the background that led me to say, well, you know, I think this might cost between $5,000 and $10,000. And that was, and that's kind of a, that's about what it was in that other project to do what they did. And again, I don't know what Stoughton is going to do. With respect to the issues that would need to be addressed, again, there's one specific issue that this motion asks the Landmarks Commission to address, having to do with the procedure that would apply to approve the demolition of a building in a historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Now, of course, that narrow issue, though, fits into a broader context. And I have not reviewed in any detail your existing Landmarks Commission ordinance. I have taken a look at it in connection with the first project I was asked to look at, which was, you know, what's the procedure for approving or reviewing a proposed demolition of a building in the downtown design overlay zoning district? So in looking at that question, I identified some ambiguity in the existing ordinance about that procedure. I gave you an opinion as to, you know, what I think the, how to interpret the ordinances. And then at the last meeting, I learned that the chapter relating to Landmarks Commission had been revised since I'd seen it previously, and I looked at that, and I can see that there is, in fact, at least one, what I believe it would be a conflict between that chapter and your zoning chapter. Basically, in your Landmarks Commission chapter, it says that the Landmarks Commission has the authority to determine whether or not to approve the demolition of a structure, and that decision by the Landmarks Commission is subject to appeal to the council. And that's if a structure's been designated as a landmark. Whereas under Chapter 78, it's a different process. Chapter 78 says that if a structure's been designated as a landmark, the procedure for getting approval to demolish the building is that the Plan Commission, well, that the Landmarks Commission makes a recommendation to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission makes a final decision. So to me, those are two different procedures involved in addressing the very same question. Is the demolition of this building authorized? You could end up with inconsistent results. I don't know that the council really intended for that. I think it's unlikely. That's just one example of a conflict I noted between those two chapters. And what happens when you start to evaluate an ordinance and look at making a change, and you start to review, well, what's the existing procedure, what kind of change do we want to make? And you start reviewing things, then you start identifying issues. And then that leads to questions about how do we move forward? Now, so exactly what that process would be here, how long it would take, what the end result would be, I don't know. But based on the experience I've had with drafting ordinances generally and this other project I did in Oregon, you know, it might take some time. And as I said, that project took about, total of about 48 hours of legal time between attending meetings, drafting things, evaluating the ordinances, and so on. So I don't know if that answers your question, Greg, but that's the best I can do tonight.
More information than we had. If I could follow up.
Sure, go ahead.
Matt, if, would one take precedence over the other if there was a situation where a conflict occurred? Would the ordinance take precedence over the landmarks?
Well, I've not yet been asked to provide a legal opinion on that, but in my opinion right now, and I said this in a memo I sent out, I think you'd have to interpret the ordinances to say, you need both approvals, and if you don't get them both, you can't proceed. Now, again, I think it's unlikely that the city council really knew that when it was adopting the zoning code and said, yeah, that's what we want, but that's, I think, what you have right now. So if you're going to take the time to revise your procedures in your ordinances on these questions, I would think that you'd want to ask those kind of questions. Is that really what you want? Do you want to change that? Do you want to address that as well? Let me just mention one other thing. The way the motion is phrased, it requires landmark, it would require a change to the procedure for approving demolition of a building in a historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Okay? Now, what I heard at the last meeting from Peggy, who I think knows more about this stuff than I do, is that the purpose of the being listed on, as a historic district in the National Register of Historic Places, that that is not currently, at least, there isn't a, that's not intended to then lead to a regulatory outcome of this sort, namely, setting you up for this kind of approval process for demolition. At least as of today, if you're, if that's the nature of the designation, then the purpose of that is to say, well, before you could demolish the building, for example, you need to file a particular notice with, say, the State Historical Society or something like that. So one of the questions that I think that the Landmarks Commission and the city would have to ask themselves if they wanted to amend the ordinance in this way is, do they want that particular type of designation, which wasn't necessarily intended to lead to this kind of outcome, to lead to this kind of outcome? I don't know. I mean, that's a policy decision for you all, but it's a question that's presented by the motion. So those are the kinds of questions that I think you'd be having to kind of sort through with the process.
To follow up, and you may now be able to answer this, maybe Peggy can, but I'm not sure exactly how to ask this. I have to think about it here, but I got to think about how to ask this. Peggy, do you have anything on it that you'd like to add? It's a, you know, from what Matt said.
You have to come up to the microphone. Sorry.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Um, do you mean about the question about the National Register is an honorific program, not a regulatory program, and how it connects to what a city can do?
Well, it's Greg who is asking you if you had anything, any comments.
Yeah.
I don't have any. Did you understand the point that I was making?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think that's, yes. The National Register is an honorific program. There are no restrictions on what private property owners can do with the property. But that's not to say that any community can decide that resources in a historic district are important to their community. There are other communities that have review of National Register listed properties. I think it's just important to, for a community to have the conversation and to decide what they want to do, and then have something in place that there's a clear procedure for how to move forward, you know, through that process. And I think that, my understanding is that that's one of the things we've been asked to look at, is, you know, how would there be a fair process to move through a conversation about a National Register listed building? I'm not sure if I'm answering your questions, you guys.
I think Greg had a follow-up anyway.
Could I, asking you, with the knowledge that you have, maybe you can answer this. Is there a best practice or a national standard for something like this?
For something like?
Yeah, for the demolition of a house that's not designated as a register or as a historic home to be demolished, you know, I mean, it is, or any building within, in a historic district. Is there a standard? Is there, is there a standard? Is there something that, that you can go to that would say that this is the way it should be done?
For reviewing National Register listed buildings?
Because that's what, yeah, that National Register, because that's what we're talking about.
No, not that I can think of. I, I would have to look into it. I think different communities, like I was saying, different communities can decide how they want to deal with it and then have that written into their ordinances. So I think it varies, and there isn't, you know, one standard procedure that I'm aware of.
Okay. I had Alder Person Engelberger, and then Boersma, and then Mieske.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not rocket science here. The simple question that we asked last time, whether this is written properly or not, is should the Plan Commission be the final say over a demolition of a property that's within a historic district, or should it be the council or some other? That's what we had, that's what I asked for the Landmarks to recommend back to the council. Now, I'm a little astounded at Matt's, you know, throwing out figures of five or ten thousand dollars to amend this. Matt, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The, the deal over at Oregon that you did, was that introducing their, their Landmarks ordinance, or was this a change to their ordinance, or what was that?
Well, it was, it's been a few years, but they had two.
It was 2012.
Yeah, it's about four years ago. They had, in a way that's somewhat similar to Stoughton, they had two separate chapters and procedures that, that seems to apply in their historic district. They had a historic preservation commission, such as, much like you have a Landmarks Commission. They had a Plan Commission. And so they had, they had a similar, I guess, situation in that they, they had some overlapping responsibilities, and they were trying to figure out how to restructure it and how to make things less complicated, I think, in that situation. And so they wanted to, and they did, basically restructured the process for approving different kinds of changes in the historic district. And they, and they kind of built it all into their zoning code. And that was one thing they did. Another thing they did, which is reflected in the materials that I sent, which is not necessarily part of your conversation, is they, they developed some maintenance standards that they wanted to apply in the historic district. And I can't remember exactly how that fit into the process. I know it was part of the discussion. And I guess the point I want to make is that, you know, it may not look like rocket science, and it's, it's not rocket science. I mean, we're not talking about something that's going to cost, what it would cost to build a rocket. But drafting regulations like this is not necessarily as easy as you might think. And that's why I think we have today ordinances that already have some, some issues. And so, you know, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily.
If I could continue.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Go ahead.
You know, we just, we just, this council adopted changes to the Landmarks ordinance within the last year, year and a half or so. And can you tell me what we, or maybe the clerk, tell me what we paid for modifying that ordinance?
I wasn't involved.
Well, you, you reviewed it, Matt.
I don't believe so.
Now, I don't, you reviewed it, and I don't believe it costs us anything over and above what your normal fees are.
I don't have any recollection of reviewing it, but, I mean, maybe I did, I don't remember.
You held on to that thing for about six months before Landmarks finally got it back and got it to the council, and we adopted it. So one of my questions is, if there was a change and it affected our zoning ordinances then, why wasn't it caught at that time?
Well, I.
That's, that's one question. You don't have to answer that. Another thing, I want to ask, I want to ask our clerk and any council member, how many ordinances do we adopt a year? At the end of the year, we're up to what, fifty, sixty, seventy ordinances per year? I'd like to know in the last five years how much it's cost for all of those ordinances over and above what our normal attorney fees are. I'd like to ask that to be put in the record and for the clerk to get me that, that information by our next council meeting. And I'm going to say that I would be willing to bet that it's very little, if any, that we spend. This is, this is ridiculous. We're, we're looking for a small change for an ordinance, and I think this has gotten blown out of proportion. I'm going to vote in favor of this motion again.
Okay. All right. Before we move on, I have Boersma, and then Mieske, and then Kittleson. We did talk a little bit at finance tonight about ordinances and Matt's roles and the costs and whether or not in the future we should look at those a little differently. So just a heads up, that conversation will be continuing at further finance committee meetings, so you're all welcome to attend, and we'll follow up on the information that you requested. So I have Alder Person Boersma.
It just seems to me that we're, we're fighting on issues we really don't know enough about. I think one other solution to this problem would be to, and Peggy just addressed this a bit, which is to, to see what other municipalities are doing and see if it would, would jive with what we want to do. Rather than sort of recreating the wheel, is see if there's anything standard in terms of this issue and go with it. And maybe make this, maybe make this something that we can do over the, the next, so we get it, I'm just saying, so we get it right. And maybe we could, maybe we could actually save a little money for Matt if we actually look at what other communities are doing. I mean, we're not the only community in the state of Wisconsin that is facing this, and Matt has actually dealt with this before. So I, I think if we had some way we can do kind of a search as to what other communities are doing with a dilemma that must be existing in other communities, and I'll shut up.
Okay. Thank you. I had Alder Person Mieske, and then Kittleson, and then Lawrence.
I have, after listening to this discussion, I have three concerns. The first is that I heard after listening to Attorney Dregney that the Plan Commission did not follow proper protocol and did not request opinion from Landmarks Commission before moving towards a demolition vote. That's number one.
Is that true?
Well, that's actually, it wasn't required here because that's only required for a locally designated landmark, and this building is not a locally designated landmark.
All right. Number two, I'm concerned because I thought that we had a, we, under contract, have a, an attorney who is supposed to review ordinances before we vote on them to ensure that we have no conflicts. That has not happened, seeing that we just had a update of the Landmarks Commission, and nothing was said, nothing was found. We just went through having the, the law firm that is representing the city right now renewed, but it had contingencies that we are aware of that we had in closed session. And this may be a discussion at a point that needs to be brought up again. Third, maybe my mistake when I did the motion using the, using the recommendation to use the National Register Historic Places boundaries to establish the authority for Landmarks Commission to review demolition. Could have easily said, looked at this and went by, by street and block, so that, therefore, we wouldn't have to be concerned about the National Register and its program and how it is a voluntary program, which has nothing to do with the jurisdiction and how we, as a city, deem to control structures with, inside those boundaries. That being said, I also believe that some of the things that he's, that the attorney is bringing up are being viewed as, as an attorney to micro-manage a situation and do a cover your, you know what, for all intensive purposes, which I think is overkill. I think this is a relatively simple request. We already have protocols in place on how we go about reviewing structures that are going, that are up for demolition, both through planning and also through landmarks with the, with the local landmarks. We'd use the same protocols. As far as what the cost is, we don't know what those costs are. Everyone has said that. That the Landmarks Commission has not even had a chance to request funds. They haven't even had a chance to even look to see how much it is. So to talk about having five to ten thousand dollars out there, it's, it's very premature. It's, we're way ahead of the, way, way, way ahead of the curve. We don't even know. It may, it may only cost five hundred dollars. You don't know, because nothing's been requested yet. So let's give the Landmarks Commission a chance to develop something, a game plan, and come forward, and let's talk about it then. Because the funding is, if, if we decide this is important, which I think everybody does, we're going to find the funding someplace for it. At least, God, I hope we do.
Okay, thank you. I have Alder Person Kittleson, then Lawrence, and then Johnson.
Yeah, I think, I don't think this is the right approach for this. We, we trust the Planning Commission to do their job. They read up, they follow through, they check into different situations and so forth. The question I would have with Rodney and whether you can answer it or not, but there's a non-compliance ordinance on our books, and whether this would fall in or not, but I do believe you're allowed to spend on repairs fifty percent of the market value. And the other issue that some of you guys might not be overseeing is that, for instance, up and down Main Street, it's a zoned commercial. So if buildings are sitting there as the style of residential, being the bottom floor is a zoned commercial, there isn't a whole lot of use sometimes for those buildings to be worked around. So I think that this idea of sending to the Landmarks, I totally understand their position, but to send something back and put that kind of power into that committee when we have a Planning Commission who does their due diligence to figure out what should be worked on, I, I think it's very important that we stay with the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, could you answer on those?
I don't know that, we haven't evaluated the, the building or the structure of the site for any non-compliance. Generally, non-compliance is created when a district's standards change. For example, if setbacks change in a district and a structure now doesn't meet the setback requirement, I, we have not evaluated or believe that the structure is probably in that, I don't believe it's in non-compliance with the zoning standards.
Kind of what I'm referring to is that when you start this chain, it's just this ball that just keeps rolling, because as soon as we hit one ordinance, there's another one affecting it, then another one affects that, which in turn, another one affects that. And in all honesty, with the situation that we're in right now, if it wouldn't have, at the, it was the Planning Commission, if it wouldn't have been sent back to the attorney for review, we wouldn't even be sitting here. So we've got all these ordinances that intertwine with each other that just don't, none of them match up. So I think there's a lot of work ahead of just trying to figure out, and it, it, there's just so much of all this stuff that's intertwined, it just doesn't, doesn't go along with each other. Thank you.
Okay, I have Alder Person Lawrence, and then Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm going to support, as I did before, this motion, and I think Tom Alder Person Mieske hit the nail right on the head when, you know, as far as I know, the Landmarks Commission doesn't have much of a budget, at least for legal kinds of things. So I think it's entirely appropriate, the way the motion is phrased. All we're asking for is that the Landmarks Commission work on it. And then, as a result of that procedure, the Landmarks Commission, whatever work they start to do on it, they determine that they need to get an attorney involved one way or the other, then they'll come back to us, presumably, or they're going to spend their own money to, to, to get that legal work done. So I think Tom is exactly right. We're a little bit premature. I think the, the question is a good question, it's a fair question to ascertain as much as we can what the, the expense will be for something like that, but it's truly an unknown at this point. The Landmarks Commission should work on it, and let's let it play out from there.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Hi. I don't think the Planning Commission should have final say. I think it should be the council. I think the Stoughton City is well-known for its historic attributes, and I would like to be able to have the city council vote on that. One of the other things I wanted to talk about was the money. I don't think, to me, it doesn't sound like we have to do that much work to figure out what the glitches are. And even if it is five to ten thousand, I know that's a lot of money, but me being newer on the council, about four or five months ago, we voted, it was either seventeen to nineteen thousand dollars for a floor for City Hall. That's a floor. I'm looking at the long-term viability of trying to keep the historic district here. And if we can spend that much money on a floor, that's like fifteen by fifteen, why can't we spend, I know it's a lot of money, but spend it to keep this situation from happening again and to really keep our historic distinction alive?
Okay, thank you. Alder Person O'Connor.
Yeah. I'm going to vote for this too, but I think we should also authorize Matt to be involved at the head start of it, like we talked about in finance. Can really save a lot of time, money, and effort if he's involved at the front, and it seems to me that we have to meld a lot of stuff here together, and I think him being involved right away is important.
Okay. Alder Person Lawrence.
Well, I don't, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to respond.
Please do.
I don't think that's a bad idea necessarily, but if we're going to do that, I think we need to set some sort of parameters, our budget or something like that, so the Landmarks Commission and the attorney will have some sort of a surety of what we're comfortable with.
Okay. I had Alder Person Trul, and then Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was not a part of the, the last discussion because I was gone. Conceptually, what I understand is this really is a, is a discussion as to whether, again, Plan Commission is the final, is the final decision or whether it comes to the council. And from my perspective, as somebody who's been on the Plan Commission, I think we do do our best and try and walk, walk the line here when these kind of requests come in. I guess what I would ask as a, or offer as a possible suggestion, if truly the goal is, is to have, have these decisions come all the way back to here, I would be remiss if I didn't ask that, that if the Landmarks Commission is going to be making some recommendations, I also think it would be useful for, whether it's, it's the Plan Department or the Plan Commission also to make some recommendations, you know, as a part. So just, I guess my rationale there is to make sure that, that when council is voting, if council, if, if this passes and council is the final, final decision maker, they also have an opportunity to just hear perhaps where this particular demo might fit in our overall plan. Again, many discussions about comp plan and the like. Again, philosophically, I have no, I, I actually support the idea of, I can support the idea of council being the final authority rather than plan. All I'm asking is that perhaps we may want to, as a part of the process, also have some coming to, to council, having some comment or some information, whether it comes from, from the commission or from Rodney and our excellent plan staff.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that there's some direction to possibly let the Landmarks do some work and possibly have the Planning Commission be part of the process once they get into that work and have a role. get into that work and have a role in, in whatever decision is made. And I'm also hearing that we need to give the Landmarks Commission enough funds in order to at least start a process. So in order to do that, we would have to have an amendment, I would think, to the motion. If, you know, a dollar amount, up to a dollar amount, if, if the Landmarks Commission determined that they needed some resources in order to have an attorney help them with their work. That's what I'm hearing. Go ahead, other person Johnson.
I think if that's the consensus, and I think you summed it up quite well, the funding, I, I think could just simply be requested by landmark. They, they could go ahead and start the process, work through it, and figure out what they need, and then if they do need to go ahead and bring the attorney into it, they can request that, and then send it on to finance and ask for, for them to determine where the funds would be coming from.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any?
We could, we could just go ahead and pass it as it is then.
Okay. Do you have any questions, comments on that? Peggy, I mean, what, how did you understand the motion as far as the landmarks needing money, or?
Well, my understanding was that the landmarks would move forward looking at these ordinances. We wouldn't need any funding. So what we did when we looked at our landmarks ordinance is that there was a subcommittee who looked at other ordinances in Wisconsin, just to get sort of a context for what other communities are doing. We also explored ordinances in other states. The idea is that there are a lot of different ways to approach this stuff, and it really is dependent on what each individual community values and what they want. So there is no right or wrong answer, there is no one standard. It's what this community wants and what are the priorities of this community. So, so we did a lot of research on our own, and that's easy. You can get online and you can look up ordinances and you can read them. And we looked for ideas, and we looked for things that we felt, you know, weren't a good idea. And we looked at APA has, you know, planning, American Planning Association, they have planning best practices, they have information online. And so we did a lot of that contextual research, looking at other communities, what they were doing. And, and we were thinking about preservation best practices, which is something that I'm very familiar with because I work with it every day. So we, we did that work, and then we, we included words to define, or phrases to define various terms and, and words in the ordinance, because words are open to interpretation. And so we thought it was important to define some of these terms, because there can be a lot of confusion with some of these terms. So that was one of the first things we did, was we included a new section defining terms. And we actually didn't make a whole lot of changes, they were more like corrections. I know that sounds vague, and maybe it does sound like sort of the same thing. But the biggest correction that we made in our ordinance was the procedure for a request to demolish a local landmark, because as the ordinance was written, there was a procedure for, for working with a property owner to find a new solution if they wanted to demolish a local landmark. But at the end of that procedure, the way the ordinance was written was that we would instruct the zoning administrator to basically issue the demolition permit. And Landmarks Commission isn't in the business of demolishing landmarks, and, and it's not appropriate for that to be our decision anyway. So we changed it so that the procedure was, if we couldn't come to a conclusion about a reuse for the building with the building owner, then the commission would deny the demolition permit, because again, Landmarks Commission is not in the business of demolishing landmarks. And then the final say, the issue goes to city council, and, and that's the appeal. City council gets to decide if the landmark should be demolished. So that was, that was a correction that we made in our ordinance. So those were the, the two primary changes that we made, adding definitions and then changing that procedure for demolishing local landmarks. We, we did that work. Michael Stacey helped type up the language, and we submitted it for review before it was brought to city council. So that was, that was our procedure, and, and my understanding of what we were asked to do is in line with, with that, that we would take a look at it, that we would do some research, that we'd, there was really a very specific question we were asked to look at, and that was, you know, demolition of national registered landmark buildings in the, in the district, in the overlay district. That's the only question we were looking at, and we could do the same work, it's not going to cost anything. We make our recommendations, we give you our recommendations, you guys can do what you want with them. You know, you're not, you can decide if you want to have an attorney look at them, you can decide if, you know, you're not going to do anything and just table it. We were just going to provide recommendations. So because we were looking at something still very specific, it was really a pretty straightforward task. And I don't see, I don't see that we'd be asking for any funding for anything.
Okay, thank you. I had all the person Truel, and then Boersma. I don't know if I got the right order, but I saw you both anyway.
Thank you. Again, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding, but as I understood the, the reading of the minutes and some of the discussion, while we're talking about landmark buildings, again, no one's talking about that. It appeared that, that again, the motion was demolition within the historic districts, correct? So it wasn't necessarily, anything that's, that's been designated as a landmark, we have, we have a distinct process. I, I guess I too, to Alderman Engelberger's comment, I, I too don't quite understand why there would be extensive expenses a part of this. Frankly, all you, all we, maybe I'm wrong, but all we need to do is simply, the request can still come to the Plan Commission. But just like everything else, the, certain things that we bring, I report at a regular council meeting, we might recommend something, but council still approves this whole thing. I, I guess I don't understand why it's, it's more difficult than that, that simply when a request comes in, that, that, you know, Plan Commission doesn't have the final authority to, to allow, allow the demolition. If that's, if that's the issue, then fine, that, that we make a recommendation to council and, and go from there. And, and, you know, we certainly would want to have, in, in those settings, from a council standpoint, we'd have, have an opportunity for, for landmarks to look at it as well. If it's more than that, someone please explain it to me, because I, that seems like it's pretty straightforward, and if that's, if that's the intent, I, I certainly don't understand how we would be spending extensive money on, on drafting.
Okay. So I'd like to give the attorney Dragney an opportunity to respond to that before we go to sit and then pass.
So, you know, these things, when you, when you get into them, they do get a little more complicated. So I, I listened to Peggy's description of the change that was made to the landmarks chapter that changed the, the ordinance so that if the building owner and the commission couldn't come to an agreement on demolition, that the Landmarks Commission would deny the demolition, and then the owner could appeal that to council. My guess is that when that change was made, they didn't also look at Chapter 78, which contains a parallel procedure relating to the same issue, and which provides for the Landmarks Commission to make a recommendation to the Plan Commission on whether to authorize demolition of, of a designated landmark. So that's an example of a situation where it looks like you have two kind of different parallel procedures addressing the same issue. So the question I would have, if I was involved in, in the process, would be, is that what you want? And do you want to have two separate procedures where, in one procedure, the Landmarks Commission is making a decision that's appealable to the council, and in another procedure, you have the Landmarks Commission making a recommendation to the Plan Commission? My guess is you'd probably decide, no, we don't want that, but then what do you want? And that's where these things can get a little more complicated, because you, you end up having to look a little bit maybe beyond just the narrow issue that you're focusing on. Another example that just comes to mind for me of something that would probably need to be considered is the, the current landmarks chapter, the ordinance, that requires approval from the Landmarks Commission to demolish a building. There are no standards in that ordinance to guide their decision, and that's a problem. You have to have standards, because if you don't, there are at least two concerns from a legal standpoint with that. So those are just examples of the kinds of things that when you, when you're working on this, you have some context and maybe some familiarity with the legal issues, you, you see, oh, we have to think about standards, we have to think about looking not only at this chapter, but this other chapter too. So, you know, what's it gonna, what's it gonna take, how much time, and so on, I, I really don't know, and, and if I'm not asked to participate at all, that's fine with me. I'm just trying to share the benefit of what my experience has been with projects of this type.
Okay, I had other person Boersma, and then Johnson.
Okay, and just a context for this, because you weren't here at the meeting, but basically what happened is that, at the last meeting, is my understanding, what happened is that the question came up whether or not landmarks could have the final decision or not, and I, my question with Matt was, why can't we have the landmark, why can't we have the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the council and we make the final decision? And Matt's, Matt's understanding was that, that would, that would not square with how this decision was supposed to be made. So he said, I said, why? And he said, you can't do it. I said, why not? And he said, you just can't do it. That way, because we have, we have two different ordinance, we have ordinances that are conflicting with each other. So the reason why Matt was brought into this whole thing in the first place was because we have conflicting ordinances. And I think it's, I, you know, I just had, I've talked to folks, I think, I think my feeling is that the, that we should probably have two recommendations. One is from landmarks, one is from planning, it goes to council, and the council makes the final determination, and, and we have, because it's a, it's an issue that we, we, my feeling is that we just don't want to have to rely on sending it to the committees and have them make a decision without the involvement of, of this council. I think we should have the final decision, and if it requires that Matt gets involved to, to square up those two ordinances, and, but, but I think, I think I agree with Tom, we are premature in this. I think we need some recommendations before we, we, yeah, we, maybe we make a recommendation for a change in the ordinance, or, or whatever, you know, whatever, but I think we, I think we need to, we need to do this in the right way, and I think the ultimate right way is that council has the final determination. We're the ones who are elected to make this decision. We don't want to, and I don't want to hang this on a commission that isn't, you know, that's going to have all kinds of problems with the recommendations that they make. So I think we need two recommendations, I think we need both landmarks, and I think we need the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. I think I had other person Johnson, and hopefully that's going to wrap it up, but we'll see.
This is real quick. Being on the Landmarks Commission, and we were in the meeting, we did not know what Matt had a problem with, so that's why we were like questioning. So Peggy, are you clear with the conflict between the 78 and, was it 78 and 36?
78 is the zoning, and I can't remember the chapter number for landmarks, that sounds right.
Because I couldn't tell them what you had, I mean, I couldn't translate your, your jargon to the landmark, so I just want to make sure. That's why we couldn't proceed on anything, because I, I didn't know exactly, but it sounds like we got some determination.
And, and Mike Stacey sent me an email saying the Landmarks Commission is looking for information about what the conflict is, and so I sent him a one-page memo and said, well, here's, here's this one thing that I, that I've identified. But I also said, you know, look, that's not based on a comprehensive kind of review, so I'm not sure what else you might find.
All right, so we'll work on that, right Peggy, is that good? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote? I guess so. Other person Johnson, and then Kittleson.
Just a comment. We're talking about dual recommendation, and Peggy alluded to it earlier, that landmarks is not in the business of demolishing buildings. That's not their business. Their recommendation would almost 100% be coming back, and you, you mentioned this at, at the meeting, a landmark screening, that their recommendation would almost 100% be to deny it. So to have a dual recommendation, you would have one person saying denied, and then whatever the land, whatever the Planning Commission was, was deciding, you know, depending on how they decided. So, I mean, it's, I, I don't see where that's going to be beneficial. So I, I'm not sure that we want to go that route. I think it should either be a recommendation from landmark to planning, or, but the, but the planning should only be the one, the only recommendation coming to council, and then landmarks can appeal to council, something like that. I, it, because otherwise, if you have a, you know, I don't, if you have a dual system like that, it just seems like it'd be very confusing, and just, just really misleading.
Okay. Thank you. I have other person Kittleson.
I don't think this is a good idea at this time. Attorney came forward and said it, you need standards. Without any kind of standard setup for the Landmarks Commission, we were just basically given free wheel. And it was stated earlier that they're pretty much going to deny all requests for demolition, so we need to have some standards set up for that. And then if I'm not mistaken, we have to kind of figure out the difference between it's the overlay district, what has been designated as a landmark, and what is not designated as a landmark. So I mean, I think there's more things that are intertwined with each other here than just saying the landmarks looks at this. I think that really this needs to go back, we got to figure out standards of, if they want to try to figure out standards and come back, then so be it, but to just turn this loose like that, I don't think it's a good idea. So I'm going to vote no for it.
Other person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is very simple. The question is, should the Planning Commission make the decision solely as a, basically a politically appointed group, or should the council make the decision? That was the question that went, that we're asking landmarks to try to make some recommendations to us. We're not asking landmarks to say, we have the total say on it, landmarks. The way it works within their own ordinance is, they make a determination, and if that determination is disputed, then it comes to this body, the city council, to rectify that situation. To me, that makes a lot of sense, and that's probably the way we should do this. Under, under, addressing what, what Scott said earlier, under the current situation, the Plan Commission makes the sole determination on whether you demo a building or not, whether you issue that permit. And that's based on a bunch of criteria. Well, that criteria was not considered, or, I should say this, we didn't get that far in this particular case, a couple of weeks ago at the, at the Plan Commission meeting, because it didn't come to whether they were issuing a permit or not. It came to, we're going to ask the attorney to check it out before, you know, before it goes to the, makes a, before we make a decision. So, yeah, there should be some criteria, there are some criteria to base things on, and however it comes back, whether this council is going to be to have the final say, if we're going to have the final say, we're going to, it's going to be based on a criteria that should be outlined in the, whatever ordinance we make changes to. The other, last comment I'm going to make is, these are very simple things to take a look at and make a few changes with the ordinance. I don't think it would take more than a I don't think it would take more than a half hour for the attorney to take a look and say, okay, now this is in compliance. I think Matt's a very smart guy and I don't think it's going to be any problem. My point was, you know, earlier with asking for the last five years of how much it's cost us, I don't think it's going to be a problem. So I'm going to vote in favor of this again.
All right, thank you. Did you have a few words you wanted to wrap up?
I just wanted to clarify that the landmarks commission does have standards for their evaluations. It's in our ordinance. We follow the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. These are nationally recognized standards that are preservation best practices. They're developed by the National Park Service. They're available on the Park Service's website if you'd like to take a look. Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. So we also have design guidelines that we are also required to follow. So those design guidelines, we have a set for the downtown area and we have a set for homes, because there are different types of properties, so they should have different considerations. So Stoughton has design guidelines for both of those and we're also required to make sure that anything we look at meets the design guidelines. So we have actually two layers of criteria and standards that we evaluate. Anything that comes to us that we use to evaluate. So I just wanted to be sure that you guys understood that, that we're not just winging it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Attorney Dragley.
And, you know, my quick look at the ordinance, I didn't see standards governing specifically the question of whether to approve a demolition permit request or not. It's possible they're there and I didn't see them. I didn't see that, so.
Last call, anybody else? All right, so the motion is basically the same motion that's in front of us that we voted on two weeks ago. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to new business and somebody's been waiting very patiently. It's R six, 2017, and that comes from the Public Safety Committee. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Safety Committee brings forward Resolution six dash two seventeen, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B slash Class B retailers license and special event license to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce, and I so move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any comments, Alder Person Engelberger?
You know, the committee looked at, at the, what was presented to the council, or to the Public Safety Committee, and everything was in order, slightly different from last year, but the chief and the clerk made sure that everything is up to snuff and we recommend and it passed four to nothing at the committee meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have Laura Trotter is here from the chamber. Did you have anything you wanted to add? And then I know we have a couple of questions. Thanks for your patience.
Of course. First of all, it is always just a pleasure to work with this festival and the city staff. The city staff is so supportive. I love their attitude of how can we make this work and they're just a joy to work with. So then we got to bring it then, the next step, to the planning commission and also very favorable response there. So I'm here to answer any questions you have about the packet in front of you.
Okay, Alder Person Borzma, did you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have questions. I just, I've been, I was on Setnemai Committee for years and years and years and actually resigned from that committee when we started to talk about having fermented beverage as part of the festival, which is a family festival, which involved kids and the reason, that was the primary reason why I got off that Setnemai Committee. I continue to feel the same way that this, Setnemai does not need to have alcoholic beverages served in a special tent or whatever. So I know I may be the only one voting against this, but I will continue to vote against this because I don't think it's a good direction for our city.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any comments as far as, I mean, the reasoning that you need, you know, the beer tent basically for the festival? I mean, I don't know too much about your financial situation, so you have an opportunity to speak to that if you wish.
So as everyone probably knows, I used to be the coordinator of the festival itself and now I'm the director of the chamber, so I'm not as intimately involved in it. But in my time as the director, as coordinator of the festival, it became very clear that the festival was just not making it financially. So beer, after doing a poll of festivals in the area, we found that beer is the ticket that makes the money for festivals, so we decided to make it an element of our festival, too. We're happy to say that we have a large amount of support from the bars downtown. A lot of the bar owners have said that they are slammed that weekend and they don't feel a threat at all by the presence of this beer tent. In fact, they've been encouraging us to make it better. Our first couple of years have been pretty faltering because of some organizational problems and so we're working on that. It is not our intention to make it a big beer brawl at all. Our intention really is to catch the casual visitor to town who wants a place to go that isn't a local bar that's slammed with the locals, because everyone knows where they want to go and where they want to meet their people up at the local establishments. And so our goal is to kind of catch that occasional visitor, stop in, have a place to sit down and enjoy our entertainment that's going on alongside the beer tent.
Okay, and can you speak to best practices a little bit?
So we do have, we've been working a lot with the city about best practices and we feel very comfortable. Chief Lek has been part and parcel of all of it and we feel very comfortable that we've tried to look at what the standards are in other festivals, what the standards are from the expectations of this community, and we're very comfortable with that. That being said, I know that the planning commission is working towards maybe a set of standards for festivals and we would be happy to work with them on that. As the largest festival in town, we want a seat at that table, not because we want to influence it unduly, just we want to be a partner in what this community expects out of a beer tent. So, as, anyone who's been at the festival for the last two beer tents, it's not been a huge impact as far as drinking or anything like that. We just aren't at that point and that's not where we want to be. We don't want to be, like I said, this big drunken brawl at all. It's just a place to stop and enjoy the music and some camaraderie.
Okay, thank you very much. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add that, as was stated, public safety and the chief have been looking at a lot of different best practices in regard to beer tents and those types of situations. And, you know, the city and the police department monitor this thing. There's outside groups that monitor it as well. And in the past, has it been two years now since it's been going? This will be the third year again?
Correct.
And there hasn't been any problems whatsoever and we don't anticipate any and, like I said, the chief and the department are taking a look at it, so.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
Yes, hi Laura. Thanks for putting this all together. And just to follow up on what you said, you said the Beer Garden, you did some research and the reason why you had it is because it's a way communities made money on the event. But then you also said that for the last few years, you didn't really make any money on that.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, how many years are you going to try the Beer Garden? If you don't make any money, are you going to cancel it or is it always going to be running like it's not serving your purpose then?
Well, we run like a business and every year we look at it. We know that, we know what mistakes we made in the past and we're trying to fix those. If we fix those and we still are not a viable revenue source for the festival, we will drop it. But we look at that every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Go ahead, Alder Person Bartlett.
It's a great event. I'm definitely going to support it. I like the Beer Garden. If it doesn't make money, I'm sure you'll get rid of it. I would just ask, your contact list that was part of this packet, if you could add just one more if you had already, for the Lotus Salon that opened up?
Yes.
They do a pretty brisk business on Saturday mornings.
Right.
And I didn't see them on the list, so.
Thank you for that because they're new and so maybe we missed them adding to our list of, and that list is the people who are affected by the fact that the run goes on 51. Since we've submitted the packet, we've worked with city staff and with the new KPW development, we have re-altered the route and we're no longer going to go in on 51. However, all of the people who were on 51 are going to get notified that it's not going to be on there. So we'll add Lotus to the list. Thank you very much. So that you know, part of the, when we submit it to planning, we said one of the things we're looking at is the run route and its entry into town and that we would work with city staff. Based on what's happening with the development, we are going to go back to the old route where we come in on 138. It will include going around the new roundabout and there's a little jig and a jog around Hole Avenue. Every year, we're going to have to look at that as the development develops and where that's going to be safest for our runners to come in. So that's a change, but our list of people who we have notified will just change in what we're notifying them about and so we'll add Lotus, but anyone who's affected by the new route on 138 will also be notified, whether it's residents or businesses.
And then I had Alder Person Johnson.
I'm debating kind of what my vote is going to be here. I'm, from what I heard, is the numbers going down in the attendance of the Setnemai? Last year, it seemed like it was pretty small.
So there's no real way to quantify the actual attendance. We always kind of rely on the police's estimate and so 20,000 is a good estimate for the weekend, according to them. We're not, we don't have any measurable way. Last year, the weather was horrible and so, yes, some numbers were down, but in our quantifiable ways, which is button sales, they were actually a little stronger than normal. So it just means the crowds were in different places last year. They were inside at the events that require a button and so they were buying buttons. On the street, you maybe saw some less people, but it was really cold last year. As somebody who was on the street for the entire festival, it was miserable. So I can't say last year was typical for our festival at all.
Okay, anything else on this? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of the temporary license, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And two opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our seven of 2017, and that comes from Public Safety. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution seven dash 2017, authorizing directing the proper city officials to transfer the existing Class A fermented malt beverage license for Walmart stores east LP doing business as Walmart number 1176 located at 1800 State Highway 51 to 2600 State Highway 138 effective March 15th, 2017, and I so move.
Second. And there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one? Alder Person Borzma.
Yeah, I can't do much in terms of a transfer, but I would like to point out that we have an incredible number of establishments that are approved for sales of alcoholic beverages in this city. I think we're way up there in terms of other cities and if my vote would be no and it had any weight, I would vote no, but on this one, I'll vote yes because simply as a transfer.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? Go ahead, Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that the committee voted four to nothing recommending this and I guess with the comment that Alder Borzma made, I would like to have information come to the Public Safety Committee regarding that comment.
Okay.
Where we're at percentage-wise as related to how many a municipality can have and maybe comparing a few other municipalities of our size around the area. Because I wasn't aware that there was any problem with that, but I would like to know that if there is.
Okay, Alder Person Borzma.
I don't have the details in front of me. There are, there are two different groups in Stoughton that are looking at this issue. One is Wellness Committee coming out of, out of the hospital right now and actually I think that's kind of the basis. And then there's another committee that my wife actually is on studying this whole issue and Wellness Committee is, has a person who is actually looking at it. I spoke to her a while ago. Her name is Teresa and she has details of that and I didn't get those details tonight, but I think we should, you know, we should be concerned that, at least my understanding is that we are, we are a city that pretty readily grants, permits to any establishment who wants them.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person O'Connor.
Yeah, I think, Matt, that's regulated by state law, isn't it? The number of licenses?
It is with respect to class, combination Class B licenses. There is no state limitation on the number of Class A licenses and this is a Class A.
Okay. Alder Person Johnson.
One of my concerns is having it at Walmart. The crime rate, from what I've read and statistics, is that sometimes the clientele that Walmart brings in increases the police force that needs to be there, so I will be voting no on this.
Any comments? I'll just comment on that. I know I was on Public Safety when we were first approached by Walmart and we had a long conversation about how they're going to lay out their area. And I know one of the things that they did is they eliminated the outside entrance, which some of us agreed, some of us didn't agree. The police chief felt that that would minimize the risk of grabbing goes and people just coming in and taking stuff and running out the door. They would have to go through the checkout and go into like, it's almost like a festival to get the product and then they actually have sensors and things, so if somebody would come out without paying for something, people that are placed within the establishment would know that. So I know they, they take that issue seriously and they're using technology and people to help them address those types of issues, so hopefully it'll be a non-issue. But certainly as we entertain more establishments and I'm sure there will be more requests as the city grows, we'll have more conversations about these types of venues in order to get liquor, so, and beer. Alder Person Borzma, and then Engelberger.
Yeah, and I just said that I probably would vote positively for this rather than negatively and with some support from another alder. I think I'm going to change my discussion. I am truly going to vote no.
I didn't change your mind.
No, another alder.
Okay. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also voted negative on the issue you just raised regarding the layout of the store at the time, but that was an issue we took up probably close to a year ago. And this is a totally separate issue. This is basically whether we're transferring their current liquor license over to their new location. I'm going to vote yes on that and that's what our vote is about here.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I heard two. Okay, that motion carries. I have a request I have here to go into closed session to talk about phase two. Hopefully you guys will honor that request. Looks like Dennis Stein Kraus is here from Forward Development Group. If we have any questions for him quick before we potentially go into closed session. Did I say him?
Oh, I was just going to say, is there a possibility we could have a five-minute break before we go into session?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
No.
So, yeah. Anybody else? Go ahead, Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you. I just wondered, I think I read this before, is this talking about two separate issues? Okay, that's what I thought with the way it reads here, so. I'd make a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin Statute, section 19.85, parent one, parent E, to consider as stated in the agenda.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion? Yeah, so we need a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson? Trull?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Okay. That motion.
I'd like to change my vote to no.
Okay.
Come on, let's go, yay!
Nine to three.
Okay. So we're going into closed session, there was a request for a five-minute.